All right. It's seven o'clock and time for our meeting. Mike, you call the roll?
Helwig.
Here.
Holland.
Here.
Humphrey.
He's here, he's outside.
Price.
Here.
Sorenson.
Here.
Ward.
Here.
Wilson.
Here.
Mayor Powell. President, call your wise.
Here. Please stand for the Pledge of Legions.
The Pledge of Legions to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item three, we have minutes from the March 18th, 2019 special meeting and the March 18th, 2019 regular meeting, as well as the March 26th, 2019 special meeting. We've got a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item four, adoption of the agenda, do we have any additions or corrections?
Move the agenda.
We've got a motion and a second to adopt the agenda, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Agenda is adopted. Item five, visitors to be heard. Addressing the council, persons addressing the council shall use the microphone at the podium, please raise your hand to be recognized, go to the podium and state your name and address. Items not on the agenda, members of the public may speak to, speak under visitors to be heard on any topic not on the agenda. Remarks are limited to five minutes and no decision will be made at this time. Agenda items, public testimony will be taken at the beginning of each agenda item after the subject has been announced by the mayor or council president and explained by staff. Any citizen who wishes may speak for, speak one time for five minutes on each agenda item. Public testimony will then be closed and the topic will be given to the governing body for possible action. At this point, only city council members and staff may discuss the current agenda item unless a council member moves to allow another person to speak and there is unanimous consent from the council. Questions from council members however, may be directed to staff or a member of the public through the presiding officer at any time. We've got two proclamations tonight, first being for National Library Week. Steve?
Yes.
Would you like to read it?
I would. Proclamation for National Library Week 2019, whereas today's libraries are not just about books, but what they do for and with people, and whereas libraries have long-served and trusted and treasured institutions where people of all backgrounds can be together and connect, and whereas libraries and librarians build strong communities through transformative services, programs, and expertise, and whereas libraries which promote the free exchange of information and ideas for all are cornerstone of democracy, and whereas libraries promote civic engagement by keeping people informed and aware of community events and issues, and whereas libraries and librarians empower their communities to make informed decisions by providing free access to information, and whereas libraries are a resource for all members of the community regardless of race, ethnicity, creed, ability, sexual orientation, gender identity, or socioeconomic status, by offering services and educational resources that transform lives and strengthen communities. Whereas libraries, librarians, library workers, and supporters across America are celebrating National Library Week, now therefore be it resolved that we, the governing body of the City of Vermillion, South Dakota, do hereby proclaim April 7th through 13th, 2019, as National Library Week, and encourage all residents to visit the Edith B. Seacrest Vermillion Public Library this week to explore what's new at your library and engage with your librarian. Because of you, libraries transform. Dated at Vermillion, South Dakota, this first day of April 2019.
Thank you, Steve. And our next proclamation is for the 2020 census, and Tom?
Thank you. Let me preface this by saying I have experience as a U.S. Department of Commerce Census Bureau field agent, and I know that there are a lot of people who shy away from talking to people, there are monthly surveys taken that are very important, for example, on Fridays, if you follow the market and things like that, you get the unemployment rate, it's based on the monthly census by those people. But most important, according to the Constitution, every ten years, we do the big census, and we're here to recognize that and proclaim this. Whereas the U.S. Census Bureau is required by the U.S. Constitution to conduct a count of the population, and whereas federal and state funding is allocated to communities, decisions are made on matters of national, state, and local importance based in part on census data, and whereas information from the 2020 census provides vital tools for economic development and employment, and whereas the city recognizes the importance and the value of counting each and every resident in the 2020 census, whereas the City of Vermillion is committed to ensuring every resident is counted on April 1st, 2020 Census Day, and whereas the City of Vermillion has agreed to be one of the government entities in South Dakota to enter into direct partnership with the United States Bureau of the Census with the formation of a complete count committee. Now, therefore, be it resolved, we, the governing body of the City of Vermillion, South Dakota, do hereby proclaim April 1st, 2019, as Census Awareness Day, and encourage all city residents to participate in events and initiatives over the next year that will raise the overall awareness of the 2020 census and increase participation. Be it further resolved that the city council supports the goals and ideals for the 2020 census, as well as the census takers, as they help our city complete an accurate count, and be it further resolved that the city council strives to achieve a complete and accurate count of all persons within the City of Vermillion and Clay County, dated at Vermillion, South Dakota, this first day of April 2019.
Thank you, Tom. Is there anyone in the audience that has an item that is not on the agenda? Anyone has an item not on the agenda? Seeing none, council, anything not on the agenda? Right. We have no public hearings tonight, oral business, we'll turn to new business. Item 8A, application for a building permit for awnings overhanging the public right-of-way at 100 East Main, including 11 and 13 Elm Street and 104 East Main. Farrell?
The owner of 104 and 100 East Main, they're the two main street addresses, including 11 and 13 Elm, would like to put an awning over the public right-of-way, the city ordinance allows for construction of building projections above the right-of-way, but requires the app, if you have approval of the city council. In addition to the council approval, written agreement is also required, this agreement is binding on the current owner and his or her successor in interest, and requires the owner at his or her expense to remove the same in event that the governing body of the city, in its sole discretion, shall determine that the portion of projection needs to be removed for whatever reason. Now, staff has reviewed the construction documents for compliance with the building code adopted by the city, and the proposed awning meets the snow and wind loads, and is constructed of fire-resistant material to meet the requirements in the downtown district, the anchoring schedule is adequate, and it's at least eight foot above the sidewalk, so that's all the things that we look forward to make sure that's constructed correctly. The agreement is included in your packet, the locations are shown on the drawings that they submitted, and they're going to be in, on the main street side and then above each window on the, on the Elm Street side. There is no real financial considerations for the city, administration recommends approve, approval of the placement of these awnings, and the owner couldn't be here today, but Len from Len's Awnings is here, if you have any questions about the awning, how they're going to be, what they're going to be made of, or anything that you can't see in the picture.
Thank you, Farrell. Is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to speak on this item? Turning to the council.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second, any further discussion? So we've got a motion and a second to approve the application for a building permit for awnings overhanging the public right-of-way at 100 East Main, including 11 and 13 Elm Street and 104 East Main. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Farrell. Our next item, 8B, permit for consumption of alcohol in the Cafe Brulee Furniture Zone Use Permit area, Market Street sidewalk, is it about the building at 24 West Main Street? James?
Thank you. Jim Waters submitted a completed Furniture Zone Use Permit for Cafe Brulee, their plan is to set up six tables parallel to the Market Street side of their building, each table would seat two people, their current sidewalk permit expires on November 1st, 2019, per code, administration can approve the sidewalk Furniture Zone Use Permit for food consumption once all the documents have been submitted. No problems anticipated, as they are proposing the previously approved area, the area has not been approved for the sale and consumption of alcohol however, as code requires the city council to make this decision, which is guided under 11805. Essentially, since 2013, the city council has approved the same seasonal sale and consumption of alcoholic beverages for the same furniture zone in Cafe Brulee during the hours that are outlined in our ordinance. As you can see in the attached briefing from the police chief, there have been no incidents with previous use of the sidewalk. An ordinance was adopted in 2015 modifying the sale hours to be 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM. Prior to 2015, the sale hours for alcohol in this type of setting were noon to 10:00 PM. In completing the application for a sidewalk use permit, the applicant has addressed many of the special conditions of other uses of city property involving alcohol, an insurance certificate, naming the city as an additional insured, has been provided, cleanup plan, et cetera, have also been provided, the sidewalk furniture use zone application documents have been received and are attached for your review. Cafe Brulee has paid their $35 annual fee for this permit, and administration would recommend approval of the request to use the sidewalk abutting Cafe Brulee on Market Street for the sale and consumption of alcohol as part of their Furniture Zone Use Permit during the time submitted by the ordinance. In previous years, the city council has placed a condition that alcohol sales cannot take place during Dakota Days, weekend in the Furniture Zone Use Area as part of the approval.
Thank you, James. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this item? All right, turning to the council.
I move approval, unless somebody wants to talk.
With the Dakota Days?
Yeah, with the Dakota Day provision.
Okay, and did I have a second? Okay, so we've got a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Motion and a second to approve the permit for consumption for Cafe Brulee Sidewalk Furniture Use Zone, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 8C, request to close East Main Street from South Norbeck Street to west, to the west, Vermillion High School Parking Lot entrance, and Anderson Street from Mulberry Street to Main Street on Wednesday, April 10th, 2019, from 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM for a mock accident demonstration for Vermillion High School. James?
Thank you. The Vermillion Fire and EMS Department is requesting a temporary closure of East Main Street from Norbeck to the west parking lot entrance of the high school, and Anderson Street from Mulberry Street to Main Street. Matt Callahan, the fire chief of the Fire and EMS Department submitted this street closure request, they would like to conduct a mock DUI accident for Vermillion High School students prior to prong this year, 2019. The last mock DUI accident took place at the high school on April 10th, 2016. The appropriate city departments have been notified of the request and no issues have been identified. The closure would take place from 11:00 AM until 2:00 PM with setup and takedown for April 10th, with a rain date scheduled for April 12th. The actual event will take place from approximately 1:00 to 1:30 PM, so the extra time is to allow for the street to be clean and swept prior to reopening. Affected residents have been contacted and they will receive a letter reminding them of the closure two days prior. The Baptist Church and Hanson Funeral Home have also been notified and are supportive of the event. The Baptist Church actually allows the members of the fire department to come and do their makeup in their bathroom and that sort of thing for the event. This will take place during the business day and should not result in any overtime expenses for the city. The administration recommends that the city council approve the temporary street closure of Main from Norbeck to the west parking lot at high school, at the high school and Anderson Street from Mulberry to Main on April 10th, 2019, from 11:00 to 2:00 for a mock DUI accident with a rain makeup date of April 12th, 2019, at the same time.
Thank you, James. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this item? Seeing none, council?
Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve the request to close Main Street? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 8D, a request to close a portion of Market Street on April 25th for Earth Day, Thursday on the Platts. James?
Thank you. This year, the Vermillion Area Farmers Market has submitted a temporary street closure request for Earth Day, Thursday on the Platts, as part of the Earth Day event in Vermillion on April 25th, 2019. This street closure would be for Market Street, basically on the portions abutting the south end of the Platts, and the previous portions, West Main was also closed, but the event has been scaled back a bit this year. As you can see on the map, the Main Street blockades have been crossed out, I used the map from last year and noticed, didn't notice till today, so. So, yeah, the group requests to have Market Street from West Main South to the south end of the Platts closed from 4:00 to 7:00 on Thursday, the 25th. The street closure form indicates that neighboring businesses will have been personally notified at the events prior, volunteers from Ginning Vermillion, Vermillion Area Farmers Market, USD Sustainability Department, and the VCDC will help clean up the area after the events conclude. We recommend the city council approve this closure for Thursday, April 25th, Earth Day, Thursday on the Platts.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this? Seeing none, council?
Move.
Any discussion? We've got a motion and a second to approve the street closure to close a portion of Market Street for Earth Day. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 8E, request to abate a portion of special assessments at 23 North Harvard Street. Mike?
As a background, property at 23 North Harvard was owned by the Apostolic Faith Church. The city cited the house that was moved to that lot, but never placed on a permanent foundation as a dangerous structures, after repeated attempts to get the property owner to address the situation failed, city crews had to remove the structure, fill in the basement, and clean up the lot, and this was in February of 2013. The city has tagged the property since then numerous times during their ownership for not mowing the grass weeds, sidewalks, no removal violations, and latest was sidewalk repairs were needed. The city hired contractors to do the mowing and clearing as well as repair the sidewalk. The property has since reverted to Clay County due to the unpaid taxes. Last week, the property that was sold at county auction, Nick Slattery with AMS Building Systems has purchased the property, but the city special assessments still remain as a lien on the property. Just as some background too, the city has abated portion of special assessments against a few other properties with similar issues in the past when ownership has been or will be transferred to a new owner who will improve the property. The full amount of the assessments has never been forgiven in these cases, as there are landfill fees, contractor fees, and other out-of-pocket costs from the city. In these situations, the funds for payment for the liens would be used to pay back, the special assessment funds are going to the general fund to pay back costs expended to correct deficiencies noted above. Mr. Slattery inquired prior to the county sale about the possibility of abating the I informed him that in the past, the city council has reduced them to cover out-of-pocket costs paid by the city, and that for this property, they were just under $6,500. I also informed him the city council might want some interest as these assessments have been incurred over a number of years. Included a table in the agenda memo that lists the five special assessments, where the original principal was $14,434, have accrued interest of $6,806, and broke down the hard costs included in them without any interest of $6,467. It should be noted that the certificate 7869 in 2017 was for sidewalk repair and reconstruction. All other property owners that had their sidewalks repaired that the city assessed would need to retire the assessment, which includes the interest. While this interest is not a hard cost, it might be an item to note. Mr. Slattery on behalf of AMS Building System is requesting the reduction of the city assessments on the property to $6,500. There's an email from Mr. Slattery with this request included in the packet, and also he indicated building a single-family home on the lot, has include plans for the home proposed for the lot. The city council will need to determine the amount of the assessment, if any, they want to abate for the property, may want to consider other conditions in exchange for reducing the assessment. Such conditions could be an agreement to, to pay the amount by a certain fixed day, a building permit should be requested by a certain day, and that the building permit included an agreement to address the payment and permit, as well as the need to maintain the property. I've included kind of a draft of an agreement in there, I left blanks for the amounts and dates, if you'd want to consider that as part of the building permit agreement. I think Mr. Slattery's here, if you have questions on the request.
Thanks, Mike. Is there anyone in the audience that wants to speak on this item? Anyone in the audience? Okay, turning it to council.
I think we should consider the interest on the sidewalks, as we require anyone that we pay the sidewalk costs for to pay interest over a period of time, and so I think we should include the interest, which would increase the price instead of $6,500 to $6,846.24. And so I'll make a motion that we abate it down to $6,846.24.
Did you want to include any dates in that?
Well, I would like, I didn't include the dates because I would ask Mr. Slattery if he'd give us an idea of what he wanted to, what dates he would like to have on there.
Ask that, and then we can include it in the motion?
Yes.
Thank you, I'm Nick Slattery. I guess to address directly what you were asking, our plan is to put a single-family home that kind of fits the neighborhood of yesteryear on there, if you want to show that. So we want to, tired, we want to kind of take a new home and give it the older look and put it back into a historic neighborhood, which we want to try to develop that in Vermillion from here on out. Some of these older neighborhoods need to be redeveloped. So our plan is to do this immediately. So whatever the council decides as far as the forgiveness, which, what you had suggested, I'm in agreement with, and we will get started right away. So our plan is to have the house completed before fall.
What would you like, if we put a date of May 1st to have the building permit prepared and pulled, or that be?
I need to get in front, I need to go in front of the Historical Society.
What would be comfortable for you as far as the dates?
I think May would be good if that's enough time to get that approved through the Historical Society, because they're going to want to see these plans to fit the neighborhood. So if, you know, let's just say June 1st.
June 1st.
I think that's plenty of time.
Are you comfortable?
But our, our plan is to immediately get started.
Yeah, we'll say June 1st.
Okay.
So we have a motion and a second to accept the offer of payment of $6,846.26 and abate the remainder of the assessment.
24 cents.
Sorry, 24 cents, excuse me.
You gotta get a pound and a penny.
684624, and abate the remainder with the requirement that a building permit would be applied for by June 1st.
Thank you very much.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Item 8F, first reading of ordinance, 1400 to amend Title III Administration, Chapter 34 Taxation, Section 34.24, defining the use of municipal gross receipts tax, or BBB revenue. John?
Thank you. Excuse me, earlier this year, in the first part of February at your noon meeting, the council reviewed a proposal to edit the current language in the section 3424 that was just mentioned, to edit that section to specify that some of that funding could, would be used for economic development. That's always been the practice that staff is aware of since that was first put into place in the 19, in 1985, but this was some proposed language that would clarify that and place that particular language into code. That proposal was sent to the Labor and Finance Committee, as well as the Policies and Procedures Committee. Each one of those two committees, which just about everybody here is on, almost one of those two, had a chance to look at that and modified that language proposal as it worked its way through those two respective committees. The report of the proposed language was presented at your last meeting on March 18th. I would note there's, it's the same language that you saw on March 18th, there is one difference. There is one difference. The city attorney after, after the meeting suggested that we leave the existing language first and then add the proposed language second. In the proposal you saw on March 18th, the new language was listed first and the existing language was listed after that. So it's the same language, just the order was flipped that way. So that's the only difference compared to the language that you saw on March 18th. And staff would recommend approval as a majority of the council, I guess, had a chance to in one way or another, shape the language that is before you tonight, a proposed ordinance 1400.
Thank you, John. Is there anyone in the audience would like to comment on this item? Seeing none, we'll turn it to the council. Howard?
Since I was the one that started this, I'd like to thank both committees for the study of this and working with it. As I mentioned at the time the study started, that this ordinance was passed by a referendum vote by the public for the sole purpose of, they felt the purpose of creating jobs to help economic development in the community. And if we wanted to compete in that market, we had to have revenue in order to do it. And so they found this as a way to do it. So I applaud the committee for bringing it down and would move approval.
Got a motion, or a second? Got a motion and a second? Further discussion? Steve?
I wonder if, Jim, maybe you could respond to, the language that we are adding seems to me not to reference the revenues. So it says priority will be given to the, priority for what? And so because it's in the revenues paragraph, is that sufficient for that understanding to be inferred, or should we make it clear?
You could make it clear by saying priority for allocation of revenues will be given.
Well, I would make that, I would make it in the motion.
Is that okay with our second?
Yes.
Okay. Somebody's, somebody's writing this all down, so. Any further discussion? Tom?
Thank you. During our committee meetings, at least at Policies and Procedures, we talked about some things that were raised by the chair of the committee, as a matter of fact, about, first of all, not setting a certain percentage, because that really ties the hands of people, and, and it raises some questions about, well, where are we? What are the revenue amounts going to be from year to year to year? I was against the proposal, and I suggested that if you're going to use the word priority, number one, it be defined as what is priority, and you've kind of addressed that here. The second thing is, rather than say will, simply could say may. But when you look at this very closely, ladies and gentlemen, we have an ordinance in place that does what we're doing right now. We are, right now, according to the figures that Mike and John provided us, already giving priority to the Vermillion Chamber and Development Company. In 2014, of the available funds from the BBB fund, they received 60%. They received 66% in 2018. It's always been 57% or higher. In the current 2019 budget, we have allocated 67%. And then all of the other organizations that are listed underneath the VCDC have to share the leftovers. So I don't believe that a change in this ordinance is necessary, because we're already giving them priority. I'm not sure we need to lock that into an actual city law, an ordinance. I don't want to tie the hands of future council members, and I believe we really don't need this. I think if we added anything to the current ordinance, which is basically one sentence, we could add that we require a plan, then we'll decide on the amount of money, and then when it's over, we, we want a, an accounting of how things went and how things were spent. The taxpayers deserve that, because this is their money. So I'm not for the changing the ordinance, Howard, with all due respect.
Julia?
Thanks, Tom. I understand some of your concerns, and I think actually, part of the reasons I support this is because of some of the concerns you have. I think it's important that we formalize the relationship with the VCDC precisely for the reason that we don't want to go high or low. We want to make sure that each council has the opportunity to have some flexibility, which is why we took out the percentage language. But I also think that we have already discussed putting in place the policies and procedures and working more formally with the VCDC to make sure that they have someone coming in, in this case it would be Nate, but in the future, you know, another director, right? And so we want to make sure that we have that person coming in at budget time. But I think that's a separate issue that we'll be looking into in a, in a different way. And while it is true that this is what we're already doing, maybe that's precisely why we need to have the language, so that we ensure that we keep doing it. I also think it helps not only the VCDC, but the other groups, understand that, you know, just looking at the pocket of money, you know, if they see what the receipts are, doesn't mean that that's what's available for all different groups, that we need to make sure that we have this for the economic development. Precisely because we don't have, the city does not have its own economic development, they're acting as our arm. And so this is essentially, you know, a extra government entity, and so we need to make sure that we're supporting it as such formally.
We're the, may I?
Yes.
We're the formal government entity, and, and I, I still for the life of me don't know how we, I don't know the history of how we chose the, I know we at one time had the Vermillion Development Company, and over the years, on average, they were probably given about $10,000 from the city to help do that. Then somehow, I'm told by a vote of the two boards, they merged. I don't know how that happened. I guess my question is, for, for a quarter of a million dollars or more, couldn't we have a city office of economic development? Or tell me why the, the VCDC is, deserves priority over, over other efforts, and what have the results been?
Julia?
So obviously, I can't speak to all of those, and we have a lot of that information already that Nate has presented to us, and we also get all of that information. In terms of the history, I think that's neither here nor there, because this is an issue for right now. Furthermore, I think that when we're looking at that $250,000, that that includes some of our investments into the community, and it's not for VCDC operations. And again, I, I share a lot of your concerns. From my perspective, this is to formalize the relationship and essentially to make sure that there are restrictions and regulation on how that relationship is being handled, as opposed to it being open, that it's just for economic development. I actually think this restricts rather than open the door for the VCDC to do more things, essentially.
And I guess I would like to add, because this continues to happen in these public meetings, where the impression is given that we don't get reports, or that we don't get indications of results, or that we don't have this information, and that's inaccurate, and I think that it's unfair to people at home that maybe are getting that impression, when we have two board members who sit, two people representing the city who have seats on the board who report back to us, that we have presentations pretty much whenever we want them, and that we get plans and results and reports in, in much greater amounts than we get from pretty much any other outside entity that we give money to. We are not asking for that level of accountability from anyone else. And maybe we should be, because there's a lot of taxpayer money that's going to a lot of organizations that we are not getting reports back from in the same frequency that we're getting from the VCDC. Furthermore, the idea that we would start an entirely new department in the city to replicate something that has existed in this city for close to a century, to me, it seems like the most, you know, duplicating of services and inefficient way of addressing a problem that isn't a problem. I mean, why, should we start a city version of everything that already exists to be in competition for, with things that already exist? It just doesn't make sense to me. And I, I feel like we have this discussion over and over again, and anyone who is tuning in right now would get this idea that we're just giving away money without any accountability, and I, I think that's completely untrue.
May I ask, when you say we get reports, who's we? Because I know there are members of the council who don't get that information. We don't get information about other economic development, either successes or failures. We don't hear about it until we walk Main Street.
I guess I would completely disagree. I mean, for one thing, John gives reports inside of his weekly email to us after every single board meeting. I mean, there's an entire summary of the VCDC board meeting in his emails to us. To me, that seems like quite a bit of updates. Julia?
So, again, I want to reiterate that I'm actually coming from a very different perspective from Howard, and that I actually think that this will allow us to further formalize the relationship and hold the VCDC accountable, and having a much more complete budget proposal than has until now been proposed to us, which is essentially the same budget as any other smaller organization, asking for a smaller, even 10% of a dollar amount. And so I actually think this will allow us much more accountability of ensuring that those taxpayer dollars are going to where we want them to go, and much more oversight in this process. And with that, I would like to second Howard's motion.
We have a motion and a second for the?
Holland, I have a second.
Oh, that's right. Yep. All right. But, go ahead.
In the interest of transparency, we've, we've talked with VCDC, and asked them if they have agreed that in the future, because this is a substantial amount of money, that they will tell us what it's for, what the council made last year with the budget they had, and what they plan to do with it, to, so that we can justify or to offer the assistance or not, depending on the, the success of what he's had in the past and what they propose. So we're looking for more transparency. We expect to and will receive reports like we get from the rest of the departments every time it's budget time to say what the money's for and how it'll be used. So, thank you.
Any further discussion?
May I just reiterate that as the ordinance stands, and as the figures show us, year after year after year, we are already giving VCDC priority, and we don't need the amendment.
There's no further discussion? We've got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Item G, City of Vermillion Solid Waste Department tractor lease with C&amp;B Operations LLC. Jose?
Thank you. Yeah, the City of Vermillion, I guess, landfill department to be more specific, has been contacted by this entity from Yankton, formerly known as, I lost my name, yeah, Fred Hart, to see if we wanted to have a, to lease a tractor from them. We have done this in the past. This year, the only difference would be that instead of getting two tractors, we're only going to be getting one tractor. The fee for the, it would actually be a, close to a seven-month lease, rather than the whole year. And the tractor that's acquired by the landfill would actually be used to mix the compost pile, so it comes in with a front-end loader. In the past, the lease has actually been for $12 for the first 250 hours. This new lease would actually be for $25 for the, for the 250 hours, so it's an increase. It's roughly going to be, it's going to be a little bit more than $6,000 that the city would actually have to pay at the end of the lease agreement if it's, if it stays within that 250 hours. In addition to that, the city is also required to, to get insurance on the equipment, and that would be an additional, excuse me, an additional $200 that would be cost to city the insurance. With all this, the city or staff, I guess, recommends entering into a lease agreement, the city manager to be able, the city manager to be able to sign the lease agreement with this new company, Fred Hart, C&amp;B Operations, yes, for $25 for the first, for the 250 hours per hour, so.
Thank you, Jose, and thank you for coming in when I think you would probably rather be in bed. Is there anyone in the audience that has anything on this item? Turning it to council, Tom?
I, I wanted to add to that. Thanks for being here, appreciate it. This, these tractors are a good idea. I've used them with other organizations and whatnot. It's a pretty good deal. They're, they're new.
Yep.
And you get spoiled driving them, to tell you the truth. So I, I move approval of this proposal.
Got a motion and a second? Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We are going to move item H to the end of our meeting, because we are going to need to relocate to a different room to be able to use the technology needed for that. So we will move down to 9A fuel quotes. They should be in front of you.
The quotes there, first quote was for unleaded gasoline from Stern Oils, $2.33.43. Item two is unleaded gasoline regular, $2.57.86. Item three is number two diesel fuel dyed, $2.26.53. Item four is number two diesel fuel clear, $2.56.68. Second quote we got was from Burnick Service on item one, 234. Item two, 260. Item three, 230. Item four, 264. Stern Oil was low on all four items.
Motion in a second to accept low bids. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. 9B, the Prentice Park Sidewalk Phase Two. Jose?
I have my memos now, so I know what I'm talking about. So this bid item, we, we just opened bids on the Prentice Park Sidewalk Phase Two project. As the title implies, this is a sidewalk project that's happening on Prentice Park. It's actually on the north side of the park, so the south side of Clark Street, between Plum and Prentice. It would essentially just be constructing a sidewalk along that side, and then closer to the middle would connect to, to the sidewalk that was installed last year. So the sidewalk that kind of went to nowhere today, well, after this is done, then it will go somewhere. This is, there's going to be several phases, this is phase two of the project. Next year, we'll have phase three, and then the following year, 2021, will be the final phase, phase four. And the, the idea is to essentially encompass the, or surround the, the park with a sidewalk that might be used, or, or might be used by the public, or increase accessibility to the park and so forth. Bids were open on March 27th. The city sent bids to seven potential bidders and four builders exchanges. The city received five bids. We do have a, a table showing all the bidders and the total bids. Essentially, it ranged from a little bit over $32,000 to a little bit, to close to $55,000, so. But again, you guys do have the bids. The low bid was from M&amp;M Construction from Vermillion for $32,144. Excuse me, bidding, as you may know, is required for any, any project that's expected to be or estimated to be $50,000 or more. This was estimated to be less than $50,000, but because we don't exactly know what's going to happen with bidding, we tend to put these regardless of that, we tend to bid them unless we're like $5,000 and something like that in our estimate. So, I guess, this project has been budgeted for in the 2019 budget. With all that being said, administration recommends awarding the Prentice Park Sidewalk Phase Two project to M&amp;M Construction for $32,144.
Thank you, Jose. Is there anyone in the audience that has commented on this? Turning to the council.
Move.
Got a motion and a second to accept the low bid on the Prentice Park Sidewalk Phase Two project bid opening. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item C, Prentice Park Baseball Field Renovation. Jose?
Thank you. Prentice Park's been getting a lot of projects lately, but that's because they're needed. So along with the, the new city pool that the city finished a few years back, we also installed the new horseshoe pits, basketball courts, and obviously the ban shell that's utilized quite frequently during the summer. Along with that, the city also has a baseball field out in the park. This baseball field has been in existence for a few decades, to say the least, like a lot of decades. So, with that being said, I mean, it's been, it So, with that being said, I mean, it, it's been, it gets used quite a bit, and, and as you can see in my memo, the last major renovation that happened there was actually the installation of the grandstands in two thousand and four. So it wasn't even necessarily a renovation to the field itself, just an amenity that was installed at the court, at the field. Uh, but, uh, we have done, uh, some minor regrading back in two thousand, uh, to the infield and back in ninety-six, and there was also a fencing project, uh, warning track was redone, along with the irrigation system. Uh, excuse me. This, uh, proposed, uh, project essentially would have regrade the infield and actually place, uh, the existing material would be removed, the new material would be installed. Uh, they would also be installing a new drainage system to the field, which, uh, from my understanding, would greatly improve the play. Uh, excuse me, and they would also, uh, do some other, uh, fixes as far as irrigation and the warning track and so forth. Uh, the city did open bids on this on March twenty-seventh again. Uh, bid notices were sent to potential bidders. It's a low amount because there's actually not that many contractors nationwide that do this. Uh, the people that we sent one was to Omaha, and the other, uh, entity was actually from, uh, Ohio, if I remember correctly. Um, so it's very, very few. Um, we did receive one bid. However, uh, the bid was not read because they gave us the wrong, uh, bid bond amount. So as soon as we opened the bid, we see that the bid bond is not for ten percent, it's actually for five percent. We just shut the envelope up and we tell the guy that it's a insufficient bid bond and, sorry, bid again next time. Um, again, bidding is required if it's over fifty thousand dollars. This was estimated to be over fifty thousand dollars, so that's what we bid. Uh, twenty-nineteen budget includes funding for the estimated cost if the project would have been awarded. Uh, since there are no bids for the council to consider, a motion is not necessary. Um, however, we are going to be re-advertising this as soon as possible, uh, to get a, a new bid and hopefully, uh, with sufficient bonding, so we can have a project and fix the infield.
Thank you, Jose.
Thanks.
This requires no action on our part. Alright. Moving to the city manager's report, John?
Thank you. Uh, just a couple items. Uh, we do have, last year you started a human relations commission, and, uh, we do have three terms on human relations commission that will be expiring in May of this year. One of those terms is for a post-secondary student, uh, if you will, a university student. Uh, that term is for one year, so you'll annually have the ability, uh, the opportunity to appoint a new university student, so we do have that term that is expiring. The other two terms are for three years. As we, uh, get this into rotation, we're through three-year terms. Individuals whose terms are expiring, those are one-year terms. We do anticipate the city council will make an appointment at your May sixth meeting, and so we ask individuals interested in serving the human relations commission to please complete an expression of interest form available at city hall or on our website, uh, and turn that into the city by noon on May first. Uh, at your seat this evening, uh, there is a memo, memo about the sanitary sewer rates. Um, each year we look at what the winter consumption levels are, and we average that to determine average for each household, and then we determine if the current multiplier that we have on that water rate is enough to service the debt payment. Uh, debt payments that we do have, it's part of the requirements that we have with some of those, uh, grant loan packages that we receive. The current multiplier is one-hundred-and-twenty-eight percent of that average winter water usage, and, um, I'm happy to report that that number will be staying the same. There'll be no increase, no decrease unfortunately, but there's no increase. Uh, so the only reason that your sewer rate would change, uh, after May is if that your average over this past winter was higher or lower than what it was the previous year. So, uh, no, uh, increased sewer rates. Um, we were contacted, uh, by Verizon about applying for a conditional use permit for a telecommunications tower, and this will be on the west side of Market Street, uh, between the city parking lot and the, uh, old Armory, uh, National Guard Armory building. You might recall last November, uh, the planning commission did approve the design, uh, for that tower. Um, it's been kind of limbo while Verizon worked through their process. I don't have an actual application yet, but I anticipate probably within the next thirty days, we'll receive an application to place that tower. Um, that tower, that conditional use permit application would go to the planning commission for the procedures that are set up by the city council, and we'll certainly advertise that here and once we get an actual application submitted. And just a reminder, a couple of different, uh, commissions we have meeting this week. Our Historic Preservation Commission meets at Wednesday morning at nine AM. Uh, Joint Powers, this meeting is in Yankton. We rotate back and forth, Thursday at five-thirty, and then the Human Relations Commission meets, uh, Thursday at seven PM in the large conference room here at city hall.
Thank you, John.
So, uh, when the Human Relations Commission was started last year, um, and now currently on the board, there are no women, and so I just wanna take a moment to encourage women, including female students, to, um, apply for the Human Relations Commissions because I think it'd be really important to have some gender diversity on there. So, thank you.
Thank you, Julia. Alright. Moving on to invoices payable. Do we have any questions about any of the items? If not, I'd entertain a motion to pay a bill. Uh, motion and second to pay the bills, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consensus agenda. Item A, set a public hearing date of April fifteenth, twenty-nineteen for the transfer of a retail on-sale malt beverage license with South Dakota Farm Wine from J Ambry Seven LLC for Freedom Value Center to Imart Stores LLC for Imart Stores USA at eight-thirty East Cherry. Item B, set a public hearing date of April fifteenth, twenty-nineteen for a special daily malt beverage and wine license for the Vermillion Area Chamber of Commerce and Development Company on or about April eighteenth, two thousand and nineteen at eight-twenty-six Cottage for a wine tasting event. And item C, set a public hearing date of April fifteenth, twenty-nineteen for a special daily malt beverage and wine license for the Vermillion Area Chamber of Commerce and Development Company on or about May ninth, twenty-nineteen at Prentice Park Baseball Field for a professional baseball exhibition game. Can we report what we consensus agenda?
Second.
Got a motion and a, a second to approve the consensus agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we will be moving into the large conference room across the hall in order to complete item, uh, eight H.